Good evening and welcome. We'll stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everybody, and welcome. Tonight, we will open up with our public comment. And if you have any comments you'd like to make to the Board of Trustees, please step up to the microphone. And we ask you to keep your comments to three minutes. Thank you. And if you're here for the public hearing on the Consider of Approval of the Site Plan Development Agreement for Turtle Lake, that'll be a separate opportunity to speak as well. And if not, no, okay, no one's going to step up. We'll close public comment and move on to the consideration of our consent agenda, items A, B, C, and D.
I would like item D to be removed from the consent agenda.
Okay, D.
No, you just need to request it.
Just request it. And then we'll move that to the approval of payroll vouchers. And we'll put that towards the end after item number F, 7F. We'll move that to, 2D will move to make it item G.
Can we remove item C also?
Item C as well. Okay, we'll move item C as well. And we'll make it item G and H. Okay, G and H. Okay, thank you. Any other?
Eight and nine.
Eight and nine, thank you.
So we need a motion to amend the agenda?
No.
No.
No. Okay.
Good. There you go. Any other adjustments? Or we're good? Okay. Following that, can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda for items A and B?
So moved.
Support?
Support.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Okay. Moving on to item number three, the Police Department introduction oath of office presented by our Police Chief Jim Gallagher.
Good evening. Tonight's another good night. We like to come and introduce new officers and promotions when we have the opportunity. Sergeant Solely, why don't you come on up? While Nick's on his way up, many of you already know Nick. Nick graduated from Catholic Central. I won't give the year. As I do these, I feel older and older. Nick went to Catholic Central. After he graduated Catholic Central, he went off to Grand Valley State University where he got his bachelor's degree. Shortly thereafter, he was employed there as a police officer as well. Before we stole him, on March 9th, 2015, he became an employee of Bloomfield Township. The majority of his first couple of years, he was spent on the road patrol, doing the daily, learning how Bloomfield works. Shortly thereafter, he became one of our drug recognition experts, which is a very intense program in identifying impaired drivers that are just beyond alcohol. So any type of drug use, illegal narcotics, prescription drugs. That's a very, again, dedicated program. I believe you went out of state, correct? Down to, was it Florida for you? Arizona, to get that. Nick is a member of our honor guard. He recently became a field training officer. He is currently the president of our benevolent association. He's a canine handler for Maggie. And he has helped, I almost forgot her name. He's also helped develop and work with local agencies around us in developing their programs. In 2020, April 2020, he was selected as our community relations officer and at the same time transitioned into our public information officer. In both of those roles, he kind of transformed them into what they are today. The community relations was built under Officer Martin and Sergeant Matejek at the time, and Nick took it to a new level. In that, the unique experience was that time was during COVID. And so the kind of the roles, Nick can tell you stories offline about the prescription runs he was doing, what type of prescriptions he was actually picking up for people during his role there. But he was picking up groceries for our residents, elderly residents, and that who were afraid to go out during COVID and the unknowns at the beginning. Again, the PIO role, Nick is very well known throughout our local media. I still get calls today wondering where Nick's at. So with all of those accomplishments, he did very well in our promotional process and effective on January 18th, which was last Saturday, he replaced Sergeant Swetala, who just retired. So congratulations, Nick, on your promotion. And I believe his daughter Isabella is going to pin on his badge after we do his oath here.
I'm going to join you in the well.
If you're a hand, I'll be after me. I, Nicholas Solely.
I, Nicholas Solely.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
And I will support the Constitution of the State of Michigan.
And I will support the Constitution of the State of Michigan.
And I will faithfully discharge my duties.
And I will faithfully discharge my duties.
You want to introduce your family real quick?
So my beautiful wife Carly, my oldest daughter Isabella, Gabby couldn't be here. She's got some sort of sickness. She's our four-month-old. And then my mom Mary, my stepdad Tom, and then I know my dad is out of state, but he's live streaming it. So, there you go.
Alex. We also have two introductions tonight. These officers have already been sworn in, so we're just going to do the introductions tonight. Officer Alex Myers is a graduate of Manistee High School. And as I said it earlier, I get older. He's a class of 2012 there. Alex attended Lake Superior State University and earned his bachelor's degree in 2016. Shortly thereafter, right after graduation there, he was hired on at Bloomfield Hills Department of Public Safety, where he worked for eight years before we stole him recently and hiring on in Bloomfield Township. Alex is married to his high school sweetheart, and they have two children, a brand-new one, kind of, right? How old now?
She is seven weeks old.
Seven weeks old. So he came, he went through a new field training program and was having a new baby at the same time, which is a lot of work. Even though he worked in a surrounding jurisdiction, it's still a lot to learn with a bigger jurisdiction. So he also comes from a family of law enforcement. His dad's a sergeant with the Lake County Sheriff's Department on the West Side. So we welcome you to Bloomfield Township. Jake, come on up. Officer Jake Cowpey, he is a recent hire, literally just graduated the police academy, what, a month ago? About a month ago? December 13th. He's a graduate of LaVonia Stevenson High School in 2020. Again, as we go here. He attended Oakland University, where he was a member of their track team, hurdles?
Yep.
Yeah, he can jump and can run. So I, you know, we've got some competition over here. He obtained his degree in criminal justice and a minor in sociology. Prior to being employed at Bloomfield Township, he was a cadet at Auburn Hills. And it's their loss and our gain as of now. And we're excited that he is here. Again, I just said he graduated the Oakland Police Academy. So Jake, welcome. He's in, first two weeks FTO. And that concludes.
Thanks, Jimmy.
Yep.
Thank you, James.
Just can Clerk Brooke place Chief Gallagher's comments in the notes because it wasn't in our board packet? I think having that history preserved would be good.
Good point. Thank you, Mark.
I do. Yep, I'll print them off for you and get them to Tom tomorrow.
Right.
Thank you.
Yep. And congratulations and welcome. And we appreciate your support of our community and you're protecting us. I know it's a lot. You deal with the front line, and it's not always pretty, but we need you out there. And thank you for coming to work and supporting us. Item number four, discuss Redstone report concerning space needs assessment for public safety in Township Hall. Daniel Redstone, principal in charge, Redstone Architects. Daniel, welcome. Come right up to the microphone.
And before Dan starts, I just want to give a little bit of history back and take us back to, I, about a little over a year ago. And this is really just to kind of inform the new board members up here. And I'll make it quick. We had a quick PowerPoint just to show it. During the ARPA discussions with the ARPA funds, one of the recommendations by police and fire was to look at our facilities. We currently, in our agency, in the police department, are, we recommended an expansion of our dispatch center and remodel of our locker rooms. We currently are out of female lockers downstairs, and we just hired a female officer who starts the academy today, 27th. So that will be a problem for us in five months when she is done with training. So that brought us to the point of needing to look at the space we have in our police department and looking at our dispatch center. Just before I left in December to go to the National Academy, we needed to buy another desk for our dispatch center, and we were forced to take down a wall that separated our command office from our dispatch center to expand that room a little bit. We needed a fourth council. The 20-by-17 room just didn't work for that. Again, we went back to the time when there was only two monitors at a station. Now there's 10 per dispatch council. So that is where we were today. We have 12 full-time employees. We're asking for an additional two dispatchers this coming next budget year. And so that dispatch center room, and right now, my command officers are homeless, and officeless, I should say, for them. They're kind of floating around to any vacant spot that we have. At that point, we turned it over to the ARPA funds, and we were able to do an RFP where we hired Redstone to do a space needs analysis of our police department to see where we should be at today and in the future for the police agency. And do you want to mention Fire 3 at all during that process?
The fire department's aspect of that was Fire Station 3, which was built in the late 1950s and remodeled last in 1978, and where they added an apparatus bay. Since then, it has been upgraded only minimally with the majority of the time firefighters doing the work over the years. The station does not fit the current modern apparatus. The bay is not long enough. The bay is not tall enough. We have to buy trucks to fit into the station. Numerous other aspects of the station, it's tired, is to say the least. So Mr. Redstone was brought in to analyze the facility itself and also what could be done on the current piece of property and what kind of design could fit onto the current piece of property. It was a smaller property. So that's where we were at with Fire Station 3.
Thank you, Chiefs.
Turn it over to Mr. Redstone.
That's a great introduction for Daniel Redstone.
Thank you.
Close this out so you don't need it. But I don't think, did you have a PowerPoint at all?
I do. There it is. Is this a touchscreen? Are you handling this?
You can touch it.
I think it's, I just arrowed it over on mine.
Okay, I don't. I'm not quite sure what to do because I don't see anything.
Yeah, the screens aren't working.
The screens are not working?
Oh, boy.
It's dark.
Where'd it go?
Is there any way to get it going?
They were working a minute ago.
Is it display one or display two, Tom?
They're both on.
Should display one and two be lit up?
Power's on.
Slide display two.
Oh, there it is.
It's there.
Oh, there we go.
There we go.
Okay.
And so now slide down is just next slide, where?
I think that's me messing it up. There we go. I think we got it. I think, yeah.
So I'm Dan Redstone with Redstone Architects. We've been specialists in public safety facilities for over 30 years. We're celebrating 87 years of architecture in the Detroit area. And we work as public safety consultants in Michigan and around the country as consultants to other architects. The first, we're going to go through the executive summary here very quickly. The first thing we're going to do is the campus, which is the town hall and police department. And once, we were originally engaged to do the police study and the fire station study for Station 3. Subsequently, we were asked also to look at the space needs for Town Hall.
Can I interrupt you right there? I'm sorry to interrupt you. I just need to bring this back to the board because my recollection, not that I want to stop your presentation, just go on after I'm finished. My recollection was that the board approved the police department and Fire Station 3, looking at that as far as funds for that with Redstone. And I don't know how this, how we got involved with Town Hall and the entire campus. It was never brought back to the board. And so I have some concerns that this has become such a huge overall project when that's not what we approved. Maybe somebody else approved it, but this board is, it was never brought back to the board, and we never approved it.
So Neil, what you're saying is this goes back, okay?
Prior to you being supervisor.
Right, no, I know. But repeat it again. You had, he was contracted to.
The original, yeah, originally was brought to the board to look at, as Chief Gallagher presented.
There was add-ons to the initial RFP. The add-ons, which was a fully approved, was to look at the police part initially.
Right.
And then there was add-ons with that based on their findings to add on Township Hall, the mechanical, there's a word for the mechanicals of it, and one other thing that was all approved within that original RFP.
Okay, because I know everything with public safety came to the board, and we approved it. Beyond that, it was never brought back to the board.
So say it again. It was Station 3 and?
Public sa, well, police department, everything that Chief Gallagher had presented.
Right. I just want to.
Fire Station 3 has been an issue for a while.
Yeah.
Okay, well, just to clarify, our original proposal, which was accepted, had some options which the supervisor, which were included in the fee, which the supervisor authorized.
Well, I understand, but the supervisor never brought it back to the board, which should have been brought back to the board. And that's not the way that things should be done. Not, it has nothing to do with you. But the previous supervisor should have brought this back to the board. That's what I'm saying. And I'm disappointed in that.
Right. So well, Daniel, why don't we go through with the presentation?
Okay.
And then we can go back, Neil, and address where we stand and why, how this all is going to play out here.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
So the introduction is simply that you have an existing town municipal building, which houses your township offices and your police department. It's a total of 32,000 square feet, 16,000 square feet per floor. The campus is about nine acres. In 2006, I guess there was a bond attempt to make improvements to the campus. I think it passed on a second go-around. It included renovation of Fire Station 1, a new public services building, a new senior center, and some parking south of Town Hall. Earlier this year, we met with Supervisor McCready and some members of the Township team to discuss our findings prior to presenting the information to you. And so these were preliminary findings. And one of the real key questions is the current and future use and purpose of the current campus. As you know, do we want to, what do you want the campus to be? Right now, it serves all of the functions of the township that serves the public, including public works, the salt dome, the court, senior center, Town Hall and police, and a fire department. So I think the gist of the meeting earlier this month was to bring you our findings, our preliminary findings, to the board so that we can have a discussion of what's your image, what your vision for the future is for this campus. And one of the things was, right in the middle of it is the salt dome. Is it something that you really want on a civic center municipal campus? Or is there something else that could be used there? Is there a place in the township for the camp, for the salt dome to move? And so one of the issues was to try to find, identify property that might also be used, other property that township owns, that you might be able to use. So we were originally tasked to identify the current and future space needs for the police. I'm going to police here. We have in the, another section, Fire Station 3, which is a little more definitive because it's, the site's determined, the needs are determined, and we've given you a couple of options. Here, we're sort of open for discussion. So the future needs of the police department. We also need to address the security issues. The existing building is really not very secure. And it's, because it's had so many additions, it's not easily adaptable to try to renovate. So then we get to the summary. We identified 58,800 square feet for current and future space needs for the police department and for 35,000 approximately for township offices. That's almost three times the size of the current Town Hall, township office building. So, and that's just the space needs for the facility itself, not including what kind of parking needs are also required. So you have several buildings on campus. In the fall, we were asked to take a look at what we could do and what we, we recommended two different buildings. We did a quick look at one strip along Telegraph at the meeting in January. I think the decision was, let's look at the whole thing, get your input before we actually start designing where we should put the building or buildings. Because there's some opinion that maybe we should still maintain the same combination of Town Hall and police together. So, and then we talked about the possible sharing with police in the 48th District Court because there is a relationship of law enforcement to the court. So the campus township zoning map, you're right here. The only area of, that you own that's fairly significantly, it's over here off Gulf Drive, there's some acreage. Most of the other properties are either wells or a couple of fire stations. So there are not a lot of, there's no property available to really either acquire or to develop. This was a topo of the 2006 survey, just showing you what was there before the senior center went. The salt dome had to move because that was where the senior center was planned to go. And guess what? It moved right into the middle of the campus. And this is what the site plan, the master plan that went to the bond issue looked like. And this is a map of the current campus. And these are, and you have it all in your report, these are the layouts of the existing building, the main floor. And we're in that gray area on top now. Oh, no, that's the lower level. That's assessing. The upper level is, to the left top is the auditorium and the circulation is somewhat in red. But there is no real separation of police and township offices. Everybody is moving back and forth, and it lends itself to security issues. We were also asked to look at the existing building condition and that age and condition. And I just want to get to that in a minute. The bottom, the bottom line is, and there are things in the report that are not here tonight, but in the report that shows you the actual photographs we took, the conditions we took. It's an old building. It's had many additions to it. It doesn't have the security. And it's very, would be extremely expensive to try to renovate it, even repurpose it for Township Hall. So we recommended that the police and Town Hall each have separate facilities. That's it for this campus, right, per se. Then we get to Fire Station 3, which is a lot easier in the sense that we know what the site is. And it's been obsolete for a long time, and it's in your report. We ended up, I guess, having a space needs of about 14,000 feet. We were able to develop something at 12.5 plus a mezzanine for a two-story facility, which with the second floor housing firefighters' living quarters. And one of the things about fire station design today, very quickly, is we need to separate, they have an intermediate area. So when they go from the apparatus bay, which we call the red zone or hot zone, to the living quarters and working area, which we call the cold or green zone, we need an intermediate area where they can decontaminate with a shower. They take their gear off, but they still have things on their body, skin, and clothing that they need to decon. So that intermediate zone is really important. Part of the issues with the site is we have very narrow setbacks. The, I don't think it all complies with the zoning ordinance, but I understand the township can waive requirements for essential facilities if they need to. We're talking about 50% of the lot area being covered with the building and parking, or the building itself. And we have been able to squeeze in parking for 10 cars, two shifts, five. The, on the, we're talking here, I believe, it says, this was for 2025 construction. If you take the construction costs, which we're estimating today at $500 a foot for new construction, plus soft costs, which is the equipment that goes with it, plus the demolition, the utility relocations, temporary facilities, we ended, and soft costs of fees and everything else, we ended up in nine and a half to 10 million. And we did say, state that if you're going to go to 2026, that that would be probably another 5% more. So, but single number, plus or minus, for replacing Station 3 at that location is about $10 million. Here's a map of it, an enlarged map. There isn't really any, I guess there might, there's some vacant property across the street and it's part of that subdivision that might provide a little more acreage. But right now, that site is very tight. This was the site plan. As you can see, we're infringing a little bit on the right-of-way along Maple. But we were able to provide 10-foot setbacks, room for the generator and transformer, so on and so forth. The main level has two full bays here and a half bay for the ambulance. We have the support services. We have, I need my glasses. I'm sorry, but the, I just can't see that well. Can I enlarge this? No? All right. Anyway, the second, the second level has the day room, the kitchen, the offices, workout area, and the balcony. So I'm going to go back up. These are sleep rooms, so they can get right out to the, right here, sleep rooms. This is a stair that goes upstairs, but we have the decon area over here. So this gets right in and out. This is the public lobby. We don't anticipate much traffic coming into the building by the public. But it's a very quick, whether you're in your, in your room or you're upstairs, it's very quick to get down to the apparatus bay and get out so that you can meet the NFPA requirements for response time. The space needs, I've just put in here the summary. In your report that you have in front of you, there's the full space needs for all three groups, the police department, the fire department, and Township Hall, along with current staffing and. fire department, and township hall, along with current staffing and projected future staffing. And that, what you have in your report, again, goes through each department, identifies by square footage, and we have space standards that confirm that, so. I'm 15 minutes in, Martin, so I'm 15 minutes early.
I'm doing good, yeah.
I think we can now go back to the questions and answers. I'm sure you probably have some.
Yeah, thank you, Daniel. I'll open it up for any questions to the board.
No, I was just going to say, certainly Station Number Three, as you mentioned, is very much antiquated, been in need of replacement for a long period of time, and I think that's a really good proposal, as far as using that space, which is very tight, again, because they do a lot of runs from that station, as Chief can attest to. I mean, it's like in the middle of the township, and they are surrounded by residential areas, and they're always on run, so they need a lot more space, and.
It's a key area, key location.
Definitely is.
Right. So, you know, I walked, I did get a tour of Station Three, and then Redstone also did quite a comprehensive study of the building that we're in, to show kind of the issues that we have here. So, we have to have a long conversation about this, but I think, like you were saying earlier, Neil, we kind of have to prioritize, and start somewhere. PD is really jammed in downstairs. I've walked down there. And as Chief Gallagher indicated, there's people kind of wandering around, and they've had, they've removed a wall to make more room for dispatch, which is working, I think, on a temporary basis, but on a long-term basis, I'm not sure that it would work that well. But then becomes the question of, how would we do this? How do we pay for this? And those are even longer conversations that we're going to have to have. But I have scheduled some meetings with our state senator and our US Congress Representative, Haley Stevens, to have discussions about trying to get some funding to help pay for these items. So, that's, just so you know, I think, and the township knows that the intention right now is to try and find public support from either the state or federal government to help us with this project, if we can, and see where we go.
I have a question of logistics. Are we talking to full, you recommended a full demolishing of that fire station and rebuilding? Or working within the frame, because you're going to expand it?
You can't renovate it. It's going to have to come down and be rebuilt.
Okay. But my concern is that we demolish that, what happens to the needs of Station Three in the months that that is out of service?
Oh.
Sorry, John.
As we've done in the past, we would have to come up with temporary facilities. When we did Station Two and Central Fire, we put trailers on-site that they ran out of. My recommendation would be to keep a fire engine at Station Three's area all the time, in some sort of temporary structure, and then move the rescue crew up to Central to run out of Central Fire for that period of time.
Because I, I'm very familiar with that area, that's basically my neighborhood, that's my station. And they just recently bulldozed the theater, and, you know, the logistics of this is probably really bizarre, but the, where the station is right now, and trying to expand it, I mean, that was a residential lot, was it not, originally? I mean, that's right on top of, behind it, and across the street is completely residential. Crazy potential, could we move over, or put your, your temporary, even use that lot temporary? Because they've just leveled it, there's nothing there.
We would have, it would all really depend on when this project occurred, and, I mean, I can't project out if this is two, three, five years down.
Sure, no, it's just, just an idea that, you know, may never come together, but there is, suddenly, there's a vacant lot right next door.
And who knows how long it's going to be vacant, though? That's the issue, so that's probably not going to work.
To piggyback that, John, that lot is very small. Do you think you guys can put a temporary trailer, and then some type of a cover structure there?
We would have to, once we have a plan in place, we would, or a timeframe, then we would have to develop the plan.
A contingency.
Yeah.
Because that is the limitations of this lot, is you also still have backup bays. You don't have drive-through bays, which is a big concern here, and we would love to have drive-through bays.
We would love to have drive-through bays, but very rarely in the fire departments do you ever see the drive-through bays with the ability to be used.
Correct, we stack trucks. I get that point.
And ultimately, we are out of store, we're out of areas for our fire trucks to be stored. With the ladder truck that's coming this fall, and the heavy rescue that's already up there, we're, we've lost our ability to store the reserve trucks. We keep two reserve engines at any given time, plus two reserve ambulances, or rescue one, plus a reserve ambulance. We just have nowhere left to put apparatus. We have a boat, that we just erected a storage facility of, shed out in the back, behind Central Fire, for the boat to be stored in, just to make do to, for the process to move forward. It really is, this is the best that we could do. We had lengthy discussions on the existing lot that we had.
And again, this would be then allowing us to be able to double stack. This would give us not only one additional ambulance bay, but then the ability to store two apparatus behind. Because that station right now, I don't know if we can double stack, can we?
We can double stack one bay. We have store, we have, we can store, have three apparatus in that facility currently, and this would allow us to have, the ability to have five.
Would the, would the budget end up going lower if we had a bigger lot?
Would the budget go lower?
Yeah, so would the overall cost of this, if we could procure a lot that would allow us to go a single-story operation, would it change the budget?
You're saving square footage on a stairway. We can waive the, because your full-time firefighters are able-bodied, we can probably get a waiver on an elevator. You're saving a few hundred square feet. I'm not sure you would save that much if you had a larger lot, and I'm not sure, we're, again, right after all the discussions we've had for almost a year, no one's come up with a location.
Yeah, yeah, again, I'm going perfect world, if we could procure you a bigger lot, does that change the budget? And what you're trying, what I'm hearing is, not very much, because you're using kind of the benchmark of $500 a square foot.
If you can find someone who, to buy the fire station and renovate it, you don't have to demolish it. So, you could save some money there. But you'd have site development costs, utilities coming in and so on. Here, we have most everything available to us, right on the street. So, it's, I just want to point out one thing. At the various station conferences, there is a, there's a firm out of Maine that has tents that do airplane hangars and so on, but they also do things for temporary, you know, facilities, such as fire, fire stations that can be put in temporarily, and you can rent them, and then you could have trailers for the firefighters, if you had to be at that location.
Yeah, because again, a concern of mine is, our fire trucks are extremely expensive apparatus, and we utilize them for a long time. So, wanting to make sure we maintain them and keep them in a warm and conditioned environment is important to me, and it's worth that investment for us, because our ladder truck was what, 1.4, 1.5?
1.7.
Million dollars. So, again, they're not going to get any cheaper, so making sure that we continue to do everything we can to shelter them is a big deal. So, I know it's your same concern as well, but I want to make sure we give you the tools to do that.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments or questions?
I do have a couple more. I was just on, I was on the fire station, sorry. So, regardless of what we do, your recommendation is that we're separating police and fire, is what your recommendation is?
It is my, it is my recommendation, based on experience that I had in Troy, Michigan, 20 years ago, where we did police, and they were, it was connected to Town Hall, it still is, but we ended up with a separate entry for police. And we did a survey at the clerk's office and at the police department front desk, to see, are you here for just police, just city, or do you, are you going to police or city after this trip? And it was like 97% single-purpose visit.
Yes.
So.
So, in that, in your analysis, does this township hall need to be raised? Are we going to, do we have to demo the township hall as-is, in order to start fresh?
I don't believe it's, economically, it would be extremely costly, you have exterior walls from three or four different additions, that it's, you don't have, you have multiple mechanical systems. It's not going to work. My, my opinion is, except for the copula, which we can save and repurpose as the standard for the township, I think, yes, you need a new building.
Again, and a lot of times, this gets to the point where the remodeling aspect becomes more costly than the new build, as well as you're not getting the length of the building, right? Because we're just still remodeling within the confines of the building, it becomes more expensive. So, I just wanted to hear from you, what you recommend, not what I recommend. So, and then you had mentioned getting closer to the courthouse with possibility of a police station. Is there enough land there to, based on their needs assessment, to build something?
The, next to the courthouse? I don't think so. Let me just go back up for one second. Put my glasses back on. So, the, most of the, first of all, at this line here, there's a big gray differential, the south part of DPW and the parking lot. The parking lot for the court is five, five or six or eight feet, at least, you know, maybe one floor below the township hall elevation. So, and this is parking for the court, and this is parking for the senior center. So, it becomes very problematic if you, if we put maybe the police down here. One of the police issues that's really serious is parking, because they need secure parking for their patrol cars and the civilian cars of the officers and staff. Something we also recommend, not necessarily secure, but separate parking even for township staff. Right now, everything is just sort of scattered and open there. So, secure, parking is really important, and for police parking, we always really require two means of egress, in and out of a police parking lot, so that if one gets blocked, you still have another secondary means of egress. And it's not necessarily used all the time, but it's there for you. So, parking was really even more, a more critical issue. We looked at, I mean, I can tell you, we, we looked at the animal shelter, it's right here in the middle. Can we move that? I think we could, you know, you've got other spaces, you've, the cable TV, the parking lot that staff uses. You have a lot to think about, as you look at what you want your campus to be for the next, you know, 30 to 50 years. If you spend money to build something here, it's going to be a huge investment, it's got to really serve the purpose of the.
And this original structure was built, what, 1938, right? And we've been added on to three times?
At least three times.
Three times, right? Yeah, brick wall, then extension, brick wall, extension.
So, where are your suggested places to put the police department? That's where I'm still struggling with.
What are we suggesting?
Yeah, do you have a suggestion where we put the police department?
I would like to get input from the board first, because, again, if we can move the dome to another location, all of a sudden, you guys have opened up, there's parking here and a dome here, even if you leave DPW down here, you've just increased, opened up the campus tremendously, so that you can maybe visualize other purposes, other uses. It also is close to the fire station, which is here. So, I mean, you have a, a really, this is a beautiful campus, a tremendous, you know, community, and what do we have in the middle of the campus? We have the salt dome.
Right.
I would say, my, I'd like to see it go, but I don't, I live in West Blenheimfield Township.
I appreciate your honesty.
Well, I knew, certainly, you know, to bulldoze and build beautiful new facility would obviously be really desirable, but if financial constraints don't allow that, did you consider at all something like, building and planning is down in the lower level, because you mentioned about the security. So, if you move building and planning out, gave that to the police department, secured the floors, so we don't have this open stairwell going up and down, and then move something like building into, move the salt dome, and, but the structure, repurpose the structure into like building and planning department.
Well, the planning area is a small section, that zoning and planning area is a small part of the building. Given the space needs that the police have identified, it's a drop in the bucket. I mean, if, if you have 32,000, and maybe it's going to be all Town Hall, that would be one thing, but I don't think, trying to do more things for the police department, maybe on an interim Band-Aid approach might work, but, but not as a long-term solution.
Okay, any other comments?
I've got a few questions. If a new building is erected for the police department, can this current building for Town Hall be used for Town Hall purposes only?
We can look at that. It's the 32,000 feet to renovate that you have now, it would be as expensive as a new building.
Okay.
Go ahead.
For the salt dome, how, if the salt dome is moved, how do we fill our trucks? And where are our trucks located and maintained? So, that's another concern, if we do move that, and the time it takes to move our truck from this facility to wherever the salt dome is located, means, located means less time on the road, salting the roads. So, if we do move that, we need to look at how we're going to address those issues moving forward, so, as well.
I'd certainly be happy to meet with all of you in a session, public study session, and.
Yeah, probably be a good idea if we could plan a work session, because I think as trustee Neil Barnett had mentioned, originally, it was really just for the police department and Station Three, and now we've incorporated the whole campus, and everybody's got some ideas and thoughts, so probably do a open work session where the public can come in and hear comments and questions.
Great.
I do have one other question about Fire Station Three. My understanding is there's new equipment available. There's some foam-based fire trucks for putting out electric vehicle battery fires? And is there a different requirement on size for that type of truck or equipment than what we currently have?
Are you talking the fire engine that's battery-based?
Not the fire engine that's battery-based, but whenever there's lithium battery on fire, it's better to use a foam-based chemical solution to put out the fire than to pour water on it. I don't know if we have that type of equipment in our resource base.
The foam, the foam that we carry, we carry the 20 gallons on each truck of Class B foam, AB foam.
Okay.
And we use what we call an eductor to flow from those buckets directly through the water, through the hose lines, so.
And we have enough resources to accommodate the growing need of electric vehicles?
Yes, as part of Oakway, it's stored in Birmingham, we have a hazmat trailer that is specifically foam-only, and carries several hundred gallons of foam.
Okay. And that type of truck would fit in the exist, the new space that we're looking at for Fire Station Three?
Fire Station Three would be built so it would house the biggest of apparatus, and probably have a floor that was poured to a thickness level appropriate with, to support the batteries that are, if the new fire engines that people are starting to buy are battery-based and weigh twice as much, so the concrete floor would have to be thicker, but it would be designed to meet that standard.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Redstone.
Thank you.
Okay, number five, public hearing. We'll open up, consider approval of a site plan and development agreement amendment concerning units 44 and 45 of Turtle Lake, presented by Andrea Bibby, Deputy Director of Planning and Building Ordinance. Welcome, Andrea.
Hi, good evening. Okay, so I was here before you, a few weeks ago, presenting an introduction to set a public hearing. So, tonight, the public hearing is set to consider the approval of an amendment of a site plan and development agreement concerning Turtle Lake, specifically lots, units 44 and 45. So, just a little bit of backstory on the history of Turtle Lake. In 2000, this was a residential development, a PUD, in which the township is, is a party to a development agreement with this, with this application. So, in addition to the request for the lot split before you, the applicant has also prepared a amendment to that development agreement, which has also been reviewed by our township attorney. attorney and has been supported for all the substantial changes within that document. So again, so what we have before you, we have a request on behalf of the property owner, Act 6 LLC, is seeking approval to amend the approved site plan for the Turtle Lake development in order to divide units 44 and 45, which you can see highlighted here on your screen, those are the two parcels that we are talking about. The request is to subdivide both parcels into four parcels each, equal a total of eight parcels. Mr. Arthur Kubert, representing the property owner, provided a letter dated March 7th and August 27th identifying that the property owners have made an attempt to market and to sell the, which is commonly known as the equestrian parcel, which would be the lower star on the screen here, which the structures are located on it. As many of you are familiar with the Turtle Lake development, this is a parcel that currently has some, a stable, a home, and some other accessory structures that are located on it. And that is, in fact, one of the parcels that we were referring to this evening. In 2000, the Turtle Lake Huron Park site plan noted, actually within the 2000 site plan, which you can see here highlighted on your screen, this was the original approval, highlighted in the yellow. You can see that the northernmost lot, which is highlighted, at that time, they did identify within the development agreement and the master deed, that they would, the current owner, which in this instance is the same current owner, which is Act 6 LLC, they noted in 2000 that the second, within the Second Amendment of the master deed, allowed for the current owner of unit 44 to create three additional units for a total of four units. So you can see highlighted here on the screen, if, if you look at that, you can see that there is a acknowledgement back in 2000 that the northerly portion could be subdivided into a total of four parcels. So that's a little bit of the history here, is an aerial of the site. The parcels that we're referring to are located here, this is the equestrian site that I spoke of earlier, and this is the lot 44 that I just referred to. So in their letter dated August 19th, 2024, Mark Moore of Victor International Corporation acknowledges the support they, and the request to create eight individual residential lots. So this is a request that's becoming, that's coming to you on behalf of Victor International, who oversees and is the manager of the Turtle Lake development, as well as the property owner themselves. Here are some site photos showing the existing equestrian lot as it sits today. As part of this request, the applicant has noted that they have continuously tried to market this very unique piece of property for a single buyer, and however, they've been unsuccessful in doing so and finding that very specific buyer, in which now they are coming forward and seeking this lot split request to be able to utilize these, this parcel by splitting it into four. So provided on your screen here, we have shown you, these are the eight proposed parcels. We have provided within your staff report, a, the width, as well as the buildable land area, which is being provided for each individual parcel. These parcels do fall within the R3 zoning classification. Within the R3 zoning district, parcels that are, that are on sewer, which in this instance, these parcels would be connected to sewer, the requirement would be for 130 width, and with sewer, they would be required to have between, they would have to have upward of 22,000 square feet or more. So if we're comparing the proposed parcels as they are, as they are provided within this illustration, I will note that the lot widths that are required to be 130, that they range from, the proposed parcels range from 130 all the way up to 348 feet in lot width, therefore meeting the requirements within the R3 zoning classification. I also want to note with the minimum land area for these parcels, again, with the requirement being 22,000 square feet, these proposed parcels range between 47,000 square feet, thus exceeding the 22,000 square feet, and then also ranging to the largest, which is, according to my eyes, is 78,000 square feet. So, just giving you a parameter in terms of the ranges, because when we're looking at these type of considerations, we also want to ensure that lots that are created are compatible and in similar nature to those lots which are around you. In this instance, the applicant has provided also within that buildable envelope, which is that the, is denoted on each individual lot, they have also provided for that envelope to include the required setbacks. So that's what you're seeing is the required setback shown with on those lots. And also as part of the review, ensuring that there is no encroachments within that buildable area into any wetlands or natural features, in which these buildable envelopes, as provided, do not show encroachments into those natural features. We do have a representation this evening, Jennifer Merriman, who's vice president of Victor International Lake Development, is here to answer any questions. She is, been working on the approved, or the, I'm sorry, the revised Ninth Amendment to the development agreement of the Turtle Lake to include the amended site plan, which this would be the amended site plan. There's also another depiction showing some of the utilities, as the topographic map shows. There is, there are existing facilities and infrastructure, so this was carefully, this proposal was carefully reviewed by our engineering, environmental services. And within their staff report, which is also included in your packet dated May 9th, 2024, they do provide direction in terms of what would be required as it relates to the engineering and infrastructure on these particular properties, as well as any easements. They do talk about utility easements and the requirement for the existing 20, there's a 20-foot wide sanitary sewer easement that traverses parcels A through D. There's also an existing 16-foot wide sanitary sewer easement that transverses through parcels D and H. Any proposed development will have to occur outside of the existing utilities and easements. In terms of any requirements for these parcels, if the, if the township board were to take action to grant this lot split, we just want to make note that any future development of any of these parcels would have to go through not only review and approval by the township's building department, it would also involve approval and review by Victor International, who is the overseer of the, of the HOA. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions regarding the proposal. I also know that we have a team here from Victor International and representatives from the property owner as well, that they are here to answer any questions. And I also believe that the information as it relates to the utilities has been drawn out by the engineering environmental services. Additionally, in, in addition to the engineering review, our assessing department did have an opportunity to review this, they don't have any issues with the proposed reconfiguration. I always want to ensure that there is no objections from our fire department in terms of access and safety. The fire department does not have any issues with the, or concerns with the proposal, as well as the police department does not have any concerns. So, again, just pointing out that each one of these proposed lots, for a total of eight, would be the two units 44 and 45 that are currently one lot, they would be subdivided for a total of eight lots. And, just want to make sure that I didn't miss anything. So I can answer any questions if I missed anything, or?
We'll hold off on any questions. We want to open it up to the public, but if Jennifer would like to step up from Victor just to make a statement, and then we'll open it up for public hearing.
Thank you, Andrea. Good evening. Thank you for considering our proposal. I am the legal counsel for the developer and the property manager of Turtle Lake. I'm joined tonight by representatives of the property owner. As Andrea mentioned, you know, I think she did a really thorough summary of what we're asking for. The property owner has gone to considerable expense to get the necessary surveys and engineering plans, do all the due diligence, and, you know, from my perspective, I'm very familiar with the governing documents, and I believe that what we're requesting complies with that. So, you know, on, we'll answer any questions, obviously, that you have and are happy to do so.
Okay, thank you. We'll open it up for public comment first, and so if you're here to speak about the lot spit, lot splits at Turtle Lake, now is your time to come up to the microphone, and you can voice your comment.
Well, should we note that we have received?
Not right now.
Multiple.
No. Yeah, we, we do have some written comments, will be submitted to the minutes as well. Okay? If no one's here to speak on public comment, we'll close public comment, and now open it up to the board of trustees for any questions or comments.
No, I just wanted to, if I could, you made it very clear that these, both 44 and 45, with the four lots on each, meet the criteria from the township that are required for a lot split.
Correct.
I'll, I'll have some other things to say, but that's the most important issue to me.
So, I, I have questions and concerns. If you recall that when we visited this the first time, I was not in favor. And one of the things, I believe it was Jennifer stated, was that the HOA was all approving and in compliance with this. And the board felt, seemed to feel, whether I said yes or no, it wasn't going to matter because it was, they were going to approve it. And so I caved, and I said, I approved. I'd like to take that vote back. I do not approve. I do not approve tonight. We were told, as sometimes happens, I don't believe the HOA and the homeowners are all in agreement with this. I don't think they were properly noticed or had proper warning, not that we didn't do our due diligence to try and tell them what we knew. I have a lot of concerns with this from reading the public comments that came in through email, I've had phone calls. People are very worried, and one of the things they're worried about is, I understand that we have rules, and the lot split and the square footage and the frontage meets our rules. But this is a floodplain, it's a low-lying area, you want to disturb and make eight homes, which is going to change the amount of absorption of the water and the water flow. It's going to, from my, best of my understanding, if I'm wrong, Andrea, I totally will be corrected. When you do that, eight lots, where right now there's just one stable, it's going to change the water flow, and it's going to drain to, I've had concerns from adjacent neighborhoods, Forest Lake, Long Lake, that it will raise, by raising the level of Turtle Lake, because where does the water have to go? You've taken away the soil conditions that is used to absorbing that. The runoff, the fertilizer additions, the environmental consequences of something like this, I think are huge. I don't see one environmental study, I don't see a water management system. We, we worked with another group a few years ago when I was new on the board, and there was a lot of worry about what's going to happen when you add this huge structure to this property. And they were putting in water retention tanks underground. I don't hear anything, any concerns about the environment. You know, we, we can fit the square footage, but we have to look at the property. And I have a lot of questions.
Do you mind if I ask a question that kind of piggybacks your concerns?
Sure.
I need a representative from either the development group to understanding what engineering has been done to mitigate this, and then what does your civil engineer do for each one of these parcels to ensure that water runoff doesn't go anywhere besides the lot? Can you guys speak to that? That's the concern that Valerie's talking about.
That's the key, that's the key question.
Well, the lake or?
Can I address that too a little bit?
Please.
So, during the last week, we spent some time in the township working on that question and researching the issue. And there was, in the 2000 development plan agreement for, for Turtle Lake, a, this, this issue was addressed. So Andrea didn't mention, but there's also a easement for a weir that separates Turtle Lake from Forest Lake and, and that goes into the canals of Forest Lake.
And it's like dictated between these two lots, it's actually like right in the middle there, isn't it?
It's actually on 44, I think. It's on one of them, it's on 45.
Between 44 and 45.
Well, one of the prior amendments says it's on 45, but, but I hear what you're saying. So, the stormwater management plan was developed in 2000, when, when this orig, the original committee was, was approved. Hubbell, Roth, and Clark reviewed the stormwater management plan, I have copies of materials, Corey helped do all the research, as, as, as did Hubbell, Roth, and Clark and our building department. And they had to present a, the stormwater management plan had to present a proposal for the management of the weir, implementation of sediment basins, and runoff discharge plans that would maintain the lake discharge at or below current flows after the development. So, when it was originally designed, it, it, there was a requirement that was met according to our, our engineering firm, to devise the weir and the support structures and the implementation of leaching basins and sediment basins, to ensure that the downstream impacts were, were no greater than they were before the development. So that's great. So, you know, that was done. And, and we collected the documents, and they were reviewed by engineering. And so the concern is, you know, it's legit, I mean, we can see exactly where that is, it's right against the lake, it's where the weir is. What happens at that weir impacts Forest Lake, which impacts Upper Long Lake, Lower Long Lake, and Island Lake, because Forest Lake also has a weir, and all of those things are related. And so all of the people around all of those lakes are quite concerned about this. But I can say that this was addressed, this question was addressed, and the plans that were submitted in 2000 were approved by our external engineers to ensure that their, that the stormwater, water management plan would not result in any more discharge than previous, previously, even in the instance of a 100-year storm event. Interestingly enough, part of that plan is that Turtle Lake itself is the detention pond for all the runoff, and is held back by the weir. So, this was addressed. Now, piggybacking on that, I'd like to say also, just as Val had mentioned, that while there was a plan in 2000, it, it considered keeping these two parcels as large parcels like equestrian parcels. If they're A parcels, that increases, as Val said, the impervious land by a lot, and in my mind, therefore, the, the, the stormwater management plan that was developed 25 years ago, needs to be updated, and we should include a provision in here for the update of the stormwater management plan to maintain the same goals as before, and greater increase of flow in downstream to maintain them and minimize impacts upon your neighbors. That's what I'd like to see, is a change that says, says that we would up, that you would update that plan, and it would meet the same goals as the previous goals, and that the plan would be reviewed and approved by our, our outside engineers, Hubbell, Roth, and Clark.
Wasn't that only for three homes? Is that two homes or three homes? So that's a huge difference.
Yeah, it's, it's, I don't know, I'm not an engineer, so I don't know how much, you know, there's a lot more lots, I mean, but now we're going to take these two large parcels and make them eight parcels. Will that have a 10% impact on greater runoff, or a 0.1%? I don't know. But that's what the purpose of doing a stormwater management plan would, would be, and to work with our engineers to do that. I just see it as being a significant enough change that we should revisit that plan to ensure that downstream impacts are, continue to be, you know, what the goal originally was, which was no greater impact downstream than before the development ever occurred in 2000. That was a very long statement, is that?
Sure, no, no, that, I, I understand. I don't think what's taking, what's being taken into account is that, you know, these 12 acres, for the most part, are just pastures, open, I'm sorry, I'm pre-cabaret, I represent the developer and the property owner. So, what's not being taken into account is either, these are open pastures, they're There's trees, but they're, you know, spread across the 12 acres. There won't be any mass grading that's done to make these sites, to split these sites. So, in fact, I think the opposite is going to happen. Once the homes are built, the developer who reviews all the plans, including landscape plans, has extensive tree planting requirements, both deciduous and, you know, pine trees and things like that, that are going to be added throughout all of the lots. So, the number of trees that you see on the property right now will probably be, you know, I mean, double, if not triple, what you'll see after these homes are built. And if anybody knows anything about tree planting and landscape planting, is that will help significantly with any runoff on the properties. So, when the project is finished and the homes are built, drainage and water runoff will be reduced compared to what the property has now.
I hear what you're saying. I don't know the answer to that, but I would like our engineers to determine that answer to verify, you're probably exactly right. I don't know, but that's what our, you know, engineers are for.
Sure.
Is to do a stormwater plan and to assure us and the entire lake community there that, that what you're saying is 100% true. So that would be my recommendation, is that we ask that the proposed revision, 19th Amendment, include a provision that requires the updating of the stormwater management plan.
Yeah, because the tree replacement is always part of every one of our plans. You're obviously going to have to take some trees out.
There aren't a lot. That's my point, though. There aren't a lot of trees on the-
Well, and we can have a plan that says we want you to put in X number of trees, and we always do that with every development. There's always a landscape architecture-
Turtle Lake requires even more.
Yeah.
A lot more.
Guarantee you that.
But when you take 12 acres that right now can absorb rainwater, snow melt, and you put up probably good-sized homes or condominiums with driveways, foundations, you're going to take away a lot of land and, you know, where it just has no, the water has no place to go, but either raise the lake level or go downstream to the other properties. So it's a huge concern.
It's just, and it's exactly, I don't know which one's right, but the stormwater management plan reviewed by our engineers would determine what's right and ensure that whatever modifications are required to the weir and the support structures are done so that there are no additional impacts downstream than present.
So Martin, are you proposing that we would include that in the amendment, and we would approve the amendment, which would include the lot splits?
Yes, yes.
And so we, the enforceability mechanism that we would have would be that agreement, and that we can withhold building permits until that agreement was satisfied? Is that what you're suggesting?
I don't know about the enforcement part, but that sounds like that's what would-
Well, I mean, there has to be some enforcement mechanism, otherwise, what's the point?
In the original language that's in-
That's section 19.
The development agreement, no, so the original development agreement from 2000 has a requirement that the developer submit the stormwater management plan to Hubbell, Roth, and Clark for it to be approved by Hubbell, Roth, and Clark, and then does indicate, and this would still be there, this hasn't changed, that the township has the right to monitor weir operations for compliance with the plan. And that a violation of it would be considered a violation of this whole agreement. It has notice provisions and so forth.
I would like to see us table it. You know, we have a letter that says over 60 residences had six days' notice of this. It sounds like, from what we were told at the last meeting, that the HOA was in full compliance. We've got emails, phone calls, letters that say the homeowners are not, and I find that very concerning, too. And I would like to see the water addressed before we give any approval.
Okay. Chris?
I just would still, Mr. Preka, I would like you to answer, you didn't get a chance to, because we asked a couple of statements, and you're providing a little backstory to some of the other things that I didn't know, and I really appreciate that. When we develop one of these parcels, what does the civil engineer do for each one of these parcels? And what, what are they looking at when we look at these? Can you describe that part of the process for each individual parcel?
Yeah, sorry, I'm not an engineer, so, I mean, bear with me, but these plans were designed by Spalding de Decker. Spalding de Decker's been in business since the 50s. We rely on their expertise to review and design these plans to meet and exceed the township ordinances. They worked directly with the township engineers, worked with the planning department, made sure that everything was in compliance. So, we relied on them to make sure that these met or exceeded township requirements. So, in addition to that, once the lots are sold, building permits are applied for, the whole review process starts again for each individual lot. So, you know, multiple engineers review these plans before a hole is ever dug. So, you know, we, again, we relied on Spalding de Decker to design and approve, or to design and submit these plans to your township engineer. The township engineer reviewed the plans, and it's my understanding that they approved them as they were designed.
Thank you.
Yep. Neil?
Yeah, I think that Martin's suggestion actually is very good, and, no, no, I think, not only is it good, I think it's legally prudent and sound, because, again, a presentation has been presented to us which meets the criteria of our lot split ordinances. On top of it, so you went back, you did your research, and you found out, you found the engineering study, and to update the stormwater management plan, I think, is certainly reasonable to include it in a motion. And so what we're doing then is presenting it, and it's incumbent upon the developer, the petitioner, to do that, and the rest is up to them. Now, for us not to do anything, to take no action, and I think, based on what's happened in some other communities, we're putting ourselves in a really risky legal position. And I think it's short-sighted to do so, and I, for one, am not going to put, I'm not going to vote in such a way that's going to risk putting, costing us a lot of legal funds when this is certainly something that could be remedied by a very reasonable proposal by Martin to go along with the petition, the approval.
Any other comments from the board? Mark?
Yes, my comment is regarding, you can adjust the water management on your side of the property, but what happens on the other side of the street, you can't change. So what you do on your property has to match up with what's happening on the other side of the street. And if you're going to put water in an area that's high, and you can't change the other side of the street, it's going to cause more problems. Over on the northeast side of the township, a few years ago, when we had the heavy rainstorms, I went over to Macefield Road, and one of the residents over there had water coming right out of the ground and creating a rivulet going into a pond and flowing north. And it, and it was, and in his backyard was so flooded that he had ducks swimming in it. And that was with the Metro Detroit Meeting Room. Now, it's unusual to have, see water just coming out of the ground and causing a small rivulet of water going into a stream. And it was about this wide going down into that stream. Now, when I think about what happened there, and I look at what's happening here, and there's no assessment, what's happening on the other side of the street that's concerning. We had a similar situation also with Legacy Hills. The water is going down into a valley area, and it's not going across the street, which is the natural flow of the land, just sitting there. And there were a lot of complaints from neighbors. I'd also like to see if you're going to be planting trees, those neighbors at Legacy Hills were also complaining about invasive species with respect to the wetland area. So what is allowed to be planted there where invasive species aren't brought in? I'd like that cleared up as well. There's a lot of things to consider as well, and even I'm looking at the topography, I'd prefer the lot sizes to be, work with the natural movement of the land. Can it be split? Yes. Into four each one? Probably not. And I don't want to have residents coming back in and complaining that they're having flooding in their basement, or their sump pump, they have to put in two sump pumps, like they did on Macefield Road. I said, "Those are all concerns, and they're happening in the township."
And I guess I'm just not in favor of approving the lot split without knowing more about the water management, because once we approve the lot split, the lots have been split, and now it's just going to be, how can we, if the water flow isn't, isn't going well, they're just going to be round after round of how can we try and manage this? I think we need to understand an implication from, other than, I think, or you think, we need experts to look at the situation, because the overflow, you know, for adjacent lakes. I mean, I've had calls from people on other lakes that are worried because of the water flow, but even just the immediate homes right there, I mean, it's just, there's no way that you're not going to have potential for a water issue when you're building on, I'm not sure if that's considered a lake or a pond, I've seen it written two different ways. You see the inlet right into those properties, the lots are all, they're big enough, so it fits that, but, you know, I think we just need to know more before we go forward.
But Valerie, on what Clark Brook had said, which I really liked, was we would be possibly, based on what this board wants to do, only approving the lot split based on a new stormwater management petition that is also, or report that is being reviewed by Hubbell and Clark, our consultants who are experts. Nobody here is an expert, even though we can all read this. Nobody here is a civil engineer.
So the lot split is null and void if they come up with water issues?
If they don't have, according to how-
Have to meet the criteria.
Martin was doing, get to meet the criteria. So, we aren't the experts. We can talk intelligently to law and not making sure that we don't get legally sued over this, but we rely on Hubbell and Clark like we did 25 years ago to make sure this was done right, and we continue to rely on them, similar to how they hired their own consultants and civil engineers, and they rely on them. Because while they are lawyers and developers, they aren't civil engineers. So that's why they put their faith in them, which is the same thing we should do as a board. So I understand your apprehension, but we still would be relying on that Hubbell and Roth report prior to doing it anyways.
Right, and I value their input. I just feel like it's a little premature. And the report from 2000 for two or three houses 20 years ago, I find kind of irrelevant. We need to take a new look, because obviously watershed flooding has changed a lot just in the last few years, because we've had these, you know, 100-year floods now we're supposed to build to, as opposed to 10-year floods years ago.
I think he said that that was actually to the 100-year flood.
It did, but it was only for two or three houses.
But at that time, wasn't it still actually supposed to be-
It was for the actual Turtle Lake development.
So that was, that was four lots there with one, technically, according to that-
Right. The only difference is that, this plan was devised for the whole development, so that it would maintain lake discharges through the weir into Forest Lake at or below current flows. And whole development was all of the houses and everything, but between now and then, the real only change is that instead of having a horse, you know, farm here, we're going to have eight lots.
Just to clarify, the original development was over 100 lots, so that would have included 100, and there's been a couple lots that have been joined since. So Jennifer was just sharing with me that they're actually originally over 100, now they're down to 93. So just a point of clarification of when that original study was done.
And if there's, Mark, do you want to make another comment?
What's the change in the square footage of the homes between the original study and the current study?
Maybe you can speak to that, if that's a development agreement requirement?
What is the change in the square footage between the original study on the homes? Because usually when you put the lots together, you end up with a bigger home, a bigger footprint, and maybe you have the same amount of developed land.
No, not necessarily. No, a lot of people combine lots next door so they can-
Do you have the math? It's, I'm not, I don't know, but I think that's a good point, is that if you're going to say that it's okay because we removed some buildings, well, were the original buildings larger or smaller? Was the footprint larger or smaller?
Our bylaws haven't changed. The bylaws of Turtle Lake have minimum and maximum, I don't know if they have maximum, but minimum square footage and I believe maximum square footage allowances. So, if you combine two lots into one, then that lot is considered one unit for all purposes under the master deed and bylaws, and we don't give them special permission to develop outside of those guidelines.
Yeah, the minimum square footage for a house in Turtle Lake on a single lot, or on a unit, is 3,000 square feet.
But we don't know what was actually in the plan.
I'm sorry, in what plan?
In the original plan.
Of the 100 lots.
Of the 100 lots.
I'm sorry, I don't want to interrupt you, please.
But they're site condominium units, they're not built condominiums. So our plans don't show this lot is going to have a home of this size. We sell the land, it's a site condo, it's one lot, and then the owner, then, like Preka was explaining, submits their plans for what they want to build, and it has to comply with the bylaw requirements.
Correct, but the original study is based on a certain amount of square footage covered for per lot, and I really don't, if we want to say that we removed seven houses, that's fine, but what was the amount of developed area in that original study?
So I would say, in general, home sizes in the neighborhood have actually gone down. So-
That's not the study.
I'm not-
I guess, I don't want to speak out of turn, but we don't have the original study from 2000, so you're correct in saying that we don't know.
Yes, and we shouldn't guess. It's, we're making an assumption, and it puts more validity to getting a new study done.
So I have, let me read something that I might suggest we would add to this, the current draft 19th Amendment, which would say something like this, "The developer will submit for approval by the township engineering consultant Hubbell, Roth, and Clark an updated stormwater management plan. The plan will provide the township with details of the existing weir and any proposed modifications required to maintain the lake discharge at or below current flows after split and development of lots 44 and 45. The result of these modifications will be to provide more than sufficient storage to detain the additional post-development site runoff for a 100-year storm event."
Is that your motion?
Yeah, yes, I'm, yeah, well, it will be. I was proposing that language to say, should, if that would be satisfactory to you all, I could make a motion.
Won't be satisfactory to all of us, but we'll see how many it is, because I think it's a good motion.
Yeah. Is there anything else you'd like to add to that, Martin?
And then do you want to include the stuff from Environmental Services, what I talked about, making sure we have to extend one of the, it was part of the report, that they have to meet or extend one of the sewers, or to make sure that this type of plan is approved on Environmental and Energy and Environmental Services? They had in their plan some of the things that we needed to do.
I think you mentioned it was like number 19.
Is that correct? Corey?
Yeah, sure, Corey, come on up.
The applicant shall include the extension of public water main to serve parcels E and F. It recommends, should the board approve the proposed lot split, that the requirement for the extension of public water main be included as a condition of approval. That's what it says in your draft letter.
Read that again, please.
The applicant shall include the extension of the public water main to serve proposed parcels E and F. The EESD recommends that should the Board of Trustees approve the proposed lot split, that the requirement of the extension of public water main be included as a condition of approval.
Correct.
Yeah, so the motion would include that part.
However, that's, that's separate from the stormwater issue.
Correct, and I'm saying I would like to add it as another condition, which was the recommendation in the email.
Martin, there's one thing I wanted to add to your statement, which was perfect, was that the stormwater management plan should meet current Oakland County stormwater standards.
Should or shall?
Shall. Thank you.
Why do you use that instead of, instead of, shall meet and, is that an additional phrase, or is it replacing something?
It should just be added to your statement. Shall meet current Oakland County stormwater standards.
It may already be in your letter if they just accept the letter in its entirety.
It may already be in your letter if they just accept the letter in its entirety.
Okay.
Good. Thank you, Corey.
Yes.
And unless there's any more information, I'd love to make a motion.
Can we ask one quick question? I was just wondering, Jennifer, I saw you shake your hand a lot, yes. Agreeing that adding this to the, your draft amendment would be okay?
Absolutely, and we were just discussing it amongst ourselves as you were discussing it, and I don't think anyone has any objection to that, I think it all makes perfect sense.
Because you guys, of course, want to be good neighbors, right? I mean, that's, this is part of that.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, Martin, why don't you make a motion?
Thank you.
At the risk of broken record, I just still don't understand how at the prior meeting we were told that the homeowners association, and I believe that was you, Jennifer, had no objection to this, and yet we have in writing that the homeowners association does have an objection and don't know how the Board of Directors approved this without communicating to them. That's still, to me, a huge concern.
I appreciate you giving me the opportunity to respond to that. I wanted to, and I didn't want to get sidetracked when it sounded like the discussion was going in a different direction. I did state in the last meeting that it had the support of the board. It does have the support of the board, but I'd like to make it very clear that it doesn't require the approval of the owners or of the board, that in our existing development agreement, there are, in our master deed, there's already provisions that provide for this to happen with the developer's approval and the township's approval. So we've met those requirements. I completely disagree with the statement that the owners had six days' notice of this, that is wholeheartedly untrue. They may have told you that, they may have been misinformed, but they have known about this since 2023. The owner had a valid offer to sell the parcel in its current configuration, and the buyer wanted assurances that the owners would not object to having horses on the property. The owners had a meeting, a homeowners meeting about it, they discussed it. There were significant objections to allowing horses on the property, even though they've been there historically. It's our position that they were allowed, but the owners objected to it, the buyer wouldn't purchase it without that assurance. And the owners were told at that time in 2023 by the owner that this would be the alternative. If they weren't able to sell it in their current configuration because of the owner's objections, that they would have no choice but to do this. So it was made very clear. I have not seen a petition that was signed by 60 residents, I don't know why none of them have shown up tonight to make a comment. I did see that three residents submitted letters of objection. One resident provided a letter in support. I don't have anything, I don't have a way of responding to the claim that there are over 60 residents who object to this, when I haven't seen that. That may be true, I personally haven't seen it. But when I said that the board supported this at the last meeting, that was true. We have emails from the president of the board saying that the board would support it following a meeting with us. So that was not intended to be a misrepresentation, and I believe that that's true.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? If not, Martin, you want to make a motion?
Yes. So I move that the board approve the 19th amendment to the master deed Turtle Lake to permit the proposed lot splits, subject to, one, an amendment to the draft 19th amendment master deed to include a provision as follows. Developer will submit an approval by the, the developer will submit for approval by the township engineering consultant Hublin Roth and Clark an updated storm water management plan. The plan will provide the township with details of the existing weir and any proposed modifications required to maintain the lake discharge at or below current flows after split and development of lots 44 and 45. Result of these modifications will be to provide more than sufficient storage to detain the additional post-development site runoff for a 100-year storm event and shall meet current Oakland County storm water standards. And subject to also compliance with the requirements of the township engineering and environmental services department, and that we would authorize the supervisor to sign the ninth, the amended 9th amendment to the development agreement for Turtle Lake that includes the amended site plan, and that is also reflected in the attached 19th amendment to the master deed.
Support.
There's support, okay. Any further comments? If not, let's take a, Mark?
I do have one comment. On lot 45, there are multiple, there are three areas that are on the topography map that are with an elevation of 925, that's five feet above the lake level, and that is after, it appears the, there's a rise in the property levels. So even if we address the areas on the weir, those areas are not addressed on lot 45 where the, where the level of the land is significant, is lower. And you're still going to get runoff in that direction and area.
Well, I think the storm water management plan is, it covers that type of thing, where is the water going that's hitting the development? And how is it being managed is exactly what the storm water management plan will do. And then we've set some criteria as to how effective it should be. I agree with your concern wholeheartedly, but I think we're addressing it by this change.
Well, water doesn't flow uphill.
Right.
And there are areas on the map, they're at 940, and that's west of the weir, and further west, it's 925. So all that water, no matter what you do, it's going to flow down to the 925, and then from a management perspective, I don't understand how you're going to fight gravity when it comes to that.
This is as configured, it's not as developed. So this isn't with a house on it or any type of topography changes associated with the build. This is as proposed.
Correct.
So we don't know what it's going to do, because we don't know where the house is, or what they're going to put on it. We have none of that information.
All right, so we have a motion and we have support, and we're going to call, have Martin do a roll call vote.
Okay, Mr. Barnett?
Yes.
Ms. Murray?
No.
Mr. Antokely?
No.
Mr. Kalinsky?
Yes.
Mr. Showstack?
Yes.
I am, Mr. Brook, I'm yes. Mr. McCready?
Yes.
And that passes, right? One, two, six, five, two. Five to two.
Five to two, motion passes, okay. Item number six, introduction of a lot split, request at 4520 Corton Road, presented by Andrew Bibby, our director, deputy director of planning, building, and ordinance. Okay, Andrea.
Just waiting for my handy assistant here, the PowerPoint. Okay, what I'm presenting to you this evening is actually, this is an introduction for a proposed lot split on a single parcel at 5520 Corton Road. The subject parcel is located immediately west of Franklin Road, immediately north of Corton. And you can also see that it's, the interior street is Mark Hopkins to the north of the subject parcel. So the request sits before you, the property owner, Kenny and Alexa Hanawa are requesting approval to subdivide the prospective parcel. I can show you here on the zoning here, that that parcel that we're speaking of is zoned R2, single-family residential. The subject's lot, again, as I stated, is on the north side of Corton Road and west of Franklin. The property is 4.07 acres in its current configuration, or 177, 217 square feet, again, having frontages on three roads, so Corton Road, Franklin Road, and Mark Hopkins. The existing home and the accessory buildings have been demolished, and the vacant, the lot is currently vacant. So the proposal, this is the land, again, as it sits now. For a point of clarification, anytime we're looking at a lot split, we take, we have our chapter 18, Article 3, the divisions of lots and parcels within our general code, in which we review any proposed lot split. The applicant has provided a survey completed by Difin Engineering that shows the division of 45 Corton by splitting the parcel into three single-family residential properties, known as, referred to in your report as parcel A, which is the parcel that would be immediately to the south, and then the two parcels B and C would be to the north, which would have frontage on Mark Hopkins for the westerly lot, and then would also have frontage on Mark Hopkins and Franklin Road on the northeasternly lot. The parent parcel was originally platted to contain, and this is why this, this is a good, a good survey to show you. You can see on this legal description that this, the area of this parcel in the legal description includes the proposed 60-foot right-of-way on both Corton Road and Franklin Road. So as you can see highlighted here within this legal description, you can also see it a little more clearly as well, as we look at this yellow and as it actually encroaches somewhat into the right-of-way. So for the purpose of doing the averaging, which is required within our lot split ordinance, I did want to note that that right-of-way does have to be removed, the right-of-way area is removed from the resultant land area. So not only did we do that for the parent parcel and the subject parcel, if you look within the area on the, on the zoning map, you can see that there's also a few parcels that are located here off Franklin Road, as well as the immediately adjacent property here off Corton Road. So just so you understand that we're comparing apples to apples, that we also removed that right-of-way, because at the end of the day, to determine not only the criteria within our entire lot split, land division ordinance, we also have to consider what the resultant land area is, and resultant land area does not include right-of-way. So with that, the minimum width within the R2 district is 120 feet with sewer. A sanitary sewer does exist for 4520 Corton Road, and is currently available for the parcel splits. By definition, the lot split is determined by the front on a public road. So in this instance, we also have a survey showing what the proposed buildable envelopes would be to meet the required setbacks. Required setbacks being 40 feet from any road frontages, so 40 feet from Corton Road, 40 feet along Franklin Road, and as well as 40 feet across Mark Hopkins, and that is what the intended layout, as is proposed. You can see highlighted here, the bottom outlined, you can see that that was the previous structure that existed on this four-acre parcel. So as part of your staff report, we have provided a table that does review all lots within 500 feet on the affected roads. In this instance, we have three affected roadways, we have Franklin Road, Mark Hopkins, and Corton. I have provided a table within your staff report, which provides a final grand total of the required, total land area requirement. So each parcel would have to meet, based on the averaging, which complies with our lot split ordinance, would have to meet a minimum of 22,852 square feet, as well as the minimum lot width of 130, my eyes are deceiving me tonight, 136 feet. The applicant has provided parcels that do comply with these provisions. Parcel A, as proposed, is 60, 60,000, 68,000 square feet with a 400-foot lot width. The parcel B comes in at 33,000 square feet, 613, with a 200-foot width, and then parcel C is at 32,000 square feet with a 200-foot. So all three lots come in compliance with that required averaging of the minimum width and lot area. The, I do note within your report that the treasurer's office did note that there were taxes that were due on the site. I do want to give you an update, that there has been confirmation from our treasurer's department that the taxes have been paid, so that is no longer a requirement of your consideration. We did have this reviewed by our engineering and environmental services. I just want to note that within the report, they do require that parcels A and parcel B, if the lot split is approved, would require connection to the sanitary, as far, as well as the water. Parcel A could remain on a septic if the applicant so choose, or if the property owner so chooses, because Oakland County Health Department does allow for a septic to be maintained on a property that is at least of one acre or larger. So with that, I am asking the board to consider all the information that's provided within your staff report. I believe we have the applicant and the property owner is here to answer any questions. However, this evening, we are asking the board to consider to accept the information I presented, and to establish a public hearing at the February 28th, 2025, public hearing for consideration of a lot split.
24th or 20th? The memo says 24th, if you just said 28th, but I don't have a count.
A public hearing on February 24th?
Correct. I also provided for you that this is the site as it exists currently. This is taken sort of from the southeast. And then the picture on the right here is, if you're driving towards Franklin on Mark Hopkins, the parcel, the subject parcel would be there to the right. And then also the picture on the left is taken from Mark Hopkins as well, kind of looking towards Franklin Road. So this kind of gives you a good view of what the current configuration is.
Wonderful day. Any questions for Andrea?
I only have one. You had mentioned that parcel B and C are going to be required to have sewer, sanitary sewer hookup because of their size?
Correct.
Is there sanitary sewer available currently on Mark Hopkins Road?
Yeah, public water and sanitary sewer are available to the remaining parcel and the lot split parcels, according to the November 6, 2024 memo from engineering.
Perfect.
And then we hold a public hearing?
Correct.
Great piece of property, I grew up across the street.
That's like one of the original farmhouses.
It is, no, I remember when I was a kid. Yep. Unless there's anything else, just make...
One question for Andrea. Yeah, I'm real familiar with that property, there was a farmhouse and a barn that was quite historic that they took down. But I had emailed you a question earlier, that in my experience, when our own personal septic, we were told if we added on to our house, this is back in the 80s, we had to hook up to city sewer, and we're like, fine, no problem, we don't know much about septic. We're on one acre, and we only added one, one small addition, and that was a stipulation. So when I read that, that's why I messaged you, it was like, well, how can they, they've demolished it, I mean, it's vacant, so it's not like they're just remodeling, they've demolished it, and yet the county would approve them to reactivate the sewer?
I can't say exactly what the final design and engineering acceptance would be, and just in terms of land area and the land, as it's being presented, it's just, it would be possibly eligible based on Oakland County standards. I don't know if the property owner is interested in having a septic.
Hi.
If you'd like, Nick Hanawa, just come right up to the microphone, please.
To me, it's more of a curiosity, it's either allowed or it's not, and the owner either wants it or they don't, but I just...
Thank you, members of the board for being here. I appreciate you guys, I'm Nick Hanawa, Nicholas Hanawa, Alexa and Kenny are my sister and father, and I'm here to represent the family. I actually grew up right next door to this property, and I currently live on Wing Lake and Corton Road, right on the corner, so I've been there for, we've been in this community for 30 years. My intent with the front parcel is to keep that at this time for myself, to develop a home on, a new home, and I would be connecting to city sewer anyways, I wouldn't even want a septic system.
It's a new house, right?
It's annoying to deal with, I have it at my current property, and so I would want to connect to city sewer anyways, so.
Thanks, Nick.
Well, you're at, you said at Wing Lake and Corton?
I'm at Wing Lake and Corton, right on the corner.
Right across from the school?
Yeah, with all the Christmas decorations, that's me.
Yeah, we met at the plant a couple years ago. I love your house, I take my grandkids by there when they're...
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Is there an award you get for having the?
I haven't got one yet, but I should get one, I hope.
Because a couple people down the road there were competing with you.
Yeah, I think my, somebody said that everyone's competing, I said, well, I just brought out the Christmas spirit in the whole street, and they're all doing the whole Christmas decorations thing now. But the good thing is, the Christmas decorations will move.
When the wind blows.
Corner of Franklin and Corton.
Oh, okay.
If I ever build a house.
Oh, okay, even closer, yeah, and it was so funny when I met you, because your name is Nick, and the spirit of Christmas is your lot.
Pleasure, pleasure to be here.
Neil, are you ready to make a motion?
Yeah, nice to see you, Nick. So just a quest that we accept this, and that we have a public hearing on February 24th, 2025.
Support.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, great.
Thank you.
We'll see you on the 24th, Nick, thank you, you too, thank you. Okay, item number seven, consider approval amendments to the fiscal year 2025, presented by our budget, presented by Jason Tice, our director of finance. Welcome, Jason.
Good evening. We have a series of these to go through, as you saw in the packet and the agenda, so the first one being the first budget amendment for supervisors' departments or supervisors' activity within the general fund. The outgoing, or the changeover of the township supervisor required a payout of accrued pay time off, as with any employee that leaves. So with that being... So with that being, having occurred, that is really the sole reason for this activity needing a budget amendment that was not taken into account at the time of approval.
Any questions on that? If not, I'll take a motion to approve.
I do have questions. The board packet includes quarterly financials, and the quarterly financials, according to the state of Michigan, should include a balance sheet. There is no balance sheet. There is no inter-fund transfers on the quarterly financials.
Mark, I'm sorry, that's not germane to the topic here. We can talk about that later, but this is specific to the Supervisor's activity.
Yes, and my concern is the fund balances and what's going on. Now, if the fund balances are not available, then how do we make a decision to approve additional expenditures?
Well, okay, Mark, so let's come back and address your issue, but let's go through these, and then we'll, I think you, that's what you had sent us the email about, and let us address your issue, because I think it's very valid. Okay.
And well, and again, my concern is, we're moving around money, and I don't know what the fund balances are, so how do I approve changes?
Okay.
So, and I think it's not only for us, but as Board, we should follow state guidelines with quarterly reports. It hasn't been happening. And this is based on statements made during training with the Michigan Township Association, and in both the staff attorney and the individual that was doing the requirements for Treasury and clerks' requirements as well. So I don't mind approving changes, but I think as a prudent Board would want to see where those fund balances are before they make those changes. I'm also concerned that the interest income is not following the principal, and that came up over and over again, and that was a standard statement made. And if you remove, and if you actually spread it based on where the principal is, it changes how much money's in the general fund. So I think they're valid questions for all changes. We don't have fund balances for Cable Studio, nothing is in the quarterly reports, and it's clear that the information should be there based on the accounting procedures documents from the state of Michigan.
Okay, Mark, we've noted your comments, and let's...
Do you want me to address them now, or you want to wait?
Why don't we wait and go through the amendments, unless you want to address them now? I mean, I'm open to it, but I...
I'd like to go through these.
Yeah, and then we'll address it.
And address this question.
Okay, so let's go back to who was making the amendment? Bill, go ahead.
Motion for the Supervisor Department. I made the...
Support.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Okay, six to one. Number B, Budget Amendment Number Two, General Fund Other Expenses, Jason?
Yeah, so another activity within the general fund represents some categories of expenses not directly tied to a specific department like Treasury assessing and so forth. That was one that we've had a lot of the ARPA-related, already Board-approved projects run through that at the time of approval. Some of those were in still development and timing stages of which fiscal year those expenses would run through. So we've been watching those throughout the year, and there are still some unknown estimates coming in, so based on the scanning project and some of the ones that are still ongoing and not closed out yet. So looking at those numbers and projecting out, my estimate is increase that by $50,000 to fall within approved budget for this year.
Any questions for Jason on this item, number B?
This is tied to ARPA funds?
The, yes, the majority of what's in that consultant line, which is causing this activity to go over, is from ARPA projects.
Okay. Any other comments? If not, entertain a motion.
So moved.
Support.
Support, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Okay, item number C, Budget Amendment Number Three, General Fund Planning Department,
Jason?
Planning Department, again, is another activity that falls within the general fund. The, I believe this came to the Board previously about using consultant services to, from Giffords Webster to help cover the vacancies, and those vacancies, there's still a couple vacancies in that department, so the use of Giffords Webster continues. We knew that might, with consultant actually being more expensive than employees, at some point during the year, could throw us into a budget amendment situation. So with those still being unfilled vacant positions, and three months to go in the year, projecting needing a budget amendment of $40,000 to the planning department budget within the general fund to cover those costs.
Thank you, Jason, and just as enough, why, we have hired a recruiter to try and help us fill these roles, because we've not been online receiving any applications, so we hope with the recruiter, we can fill this, but until the time is, we have to use a contractor. So if I could have amendment, or excuse me, a motion?
So moved.
Support?
Support.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, opposed?
No.
Passes. No, Mark?
No.
Okay, six to one, thank you. All right, D, our Budget Amendment Number Four, General Fund Transfers Out, Jason?
This is the last one that affects the general fund. The last activity within there is called the Transfers Out to Other Funds. Within there, you'll see Transfers Out to Public Safety Fund, Road Fund, Retiree Healthcare Fund, and Equipment and Replacement Fund. Road Fund and Public Safety Fund are intertwined and get substantial support from general fund So this one, you have to look at and estimate and project forward, not only where you think the general fund is going to come in, but the Road Fund and Public Safety Fund. Historically, we estimate where they're going to come in at, if they're going to be under budget, and we budgeted a, say, an $8 million transfer to Public Safety, the only, we think they're only going to need seven, we're only going to give them seven, and leave that, the other million dollars in the general fund, which is where it was originally put into. So going through that analysis, I am looking for, or making a recommendation to approve a budget amendment to the Transfers Out activity of the general fund in the amount of $2 million, which should give enough room as things shake out over the next few months across those three funds, to allow flexibility and to come back like I typically do in May, and ask for official approval to make a transfer into the Equipment and Replacement Fund. If you don't take care of the budget amendment before fiscal year end, then you can't take that next step.
And most of it has to do with cash flow?
It does.
Okay, any questions for Jason?
Yeah, this is, by the way, two amendments, right?
Yeah, thank you. The second piece is a budget amendment to general fund revenues in the amount of $2,150,000. So with a, doing a, such a large amendment on the expenditure side in that fund, which is why I attached on the next page the second graphic, it would make it, if you didn't also amend the revenue side, it would make it appear from a budgetary standpoint that you budgeted to overspend, because now you've increased your expenditures $2 million, but if you leave your revenues at the original stated amount, it can be perceived as that, and that's not the case here.
Right. Any questions or comments, Chris?
Yeah, the only question I had is, when you bring this to us before, we talk about where we want to put those extra money. If we wanted to do the equipment fund, or at times we also talk about putting it towards the actuaries. All we're saying is, we're adding more to the Transfers Out, we are not designating that it goes to the Transfers Out, is that correct?
Correct. It, right now, provides that flexibility in that activity level, and then we can have further discussions at the budget in two weeks.
Perfect.
Okay, and if you're going to make a motion, we can tie both of them together on your motion, so if someone would like to make a motion?
So moved. Tied together.
Support?
Support.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I am opposed because I don't think it's enough.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, item number F.
E.
E, excuse me, Building Inspection.
Building, there's a separate fund, Building Inspection Fund, that department, a little similar to Planning, has had a vacancy or two throughout the fiscal year. The, there's a line specifically contracted services that has been, where we've been charging another consultant, Carlisle Wortman, that's been helping that department move along and keep up with the workload of inspection activities since last spring. Again, we discussed at that point that it may at some point during the fiscal year need a budget amendment if the position was not filled. As of this time, it's still not filled, and so asking for an increased budget amendment of $50,000 to Building Inspection Department budget to cover those costs.
Any questions for Jason? If not, entertain a motion.
So moved.
Support.
Support, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No, six to one, thank you. Okay, and F, Budget Amendment Number Six, the Cable Studio, Jason?
Last one. Cable Studio Fund estimated to be over the approved budget with the newer director there. They looked to go in some new directions, providing some work for higher services through contracts with various entities and groups. So in order to do that work, they brought on some new part-time people to cover that. So they're bringing in extra revenue, but you have some offset on the expense side to actually do the labor of that work. So I am recommending an increase of $40,000 to the Cable Studio Fund budget to cover those costs.
But when we went through the budget, I want you all to know that the number that loss is way down compared to last fiscal year, and they also have hired someone who just deals in trying to get grants for the township. And Jason, they, I think you said to me today that they've, you've seen more grants come through than you've seen in the past, right?
Yeah, we currently, yeah, more than I've seen in my time here. We, a lot of grants across multiple departments.
Right, so it far exceeds this number that we're talking about, right? Because like, look, we talked about, you passed all the senior center, those were all grants for the pool, the workout equipment, the paving of the, everything, so way down. So if there's any more comment?
I'll comment briefly on this. So the amended budget that's showing here, Jason, shows a deficit of $162,000, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, so I just want to provide some color for the Board that we usually operate the Cable Studio Fund at a deficit, because we have a significant fund balance that we're using up, and the only way to tap into that fund balance is to run at a deficit. So we have, I think it's 2.4 million in Cable Studio. I know we have at least $2 million in cash, and I think that there's some non-cash assets in there as well.
Just under 2.3.
2.3, okay. So there's a $2.3 million fund balance, that's the equity of the fund, and then we're going to eat into it with these deficits. And one of the reasons, Mike, that we talked about earlier, that we're seeing some of these deficits, is the decrease in the PEG funds and the franchise fees as people cut the cord with cable, and so we're starting to see less from that, and that's something that Carrie, our department director, is doing a really fantastic job of staying on top of, and finding opportunities for us to take action to try to find ways to save our PEG fees and our franchise fees, whether that's by charging the streaming services or other mechanisms through the state and federal government. So that's something that we are keeping our eye on, but for the time being, we are operating this fund at a deficit.
Yeah, any further comments?
What was the revenue on the fund balances for the cash in the bank, the $2 million?
You mean the income?
The interest income on the principal?
I don't have it broken out by fund. We have all, we have all, we have all of our cash pooled, and we have all of that income going into the general fund.
I think that is inappropriate, and I think we should be splitting up based on what's required in the accounting procedures manual.
While I respect your opinion, state law specifically says that interest income should go into the general fund, and I responded to your email from earlier, specifically citing the state law, so we could talk about that afterwards.
I haven't seen the email.
I, I'm sure, I didn't send it early, so I have no doubt that you didn't see it because you were working, but we could talk about it later, but there is a state law that says that investment income should go into the general fund.
Including the enterprise funds?
All cash that comes into the hands of the Treasurer.
So now, why would other townships put water and sewer, investment income in water and sewer? For example, a township?
I can't speak to that.
And Mark, if you'd like us to get a legal opinion on it, I'd be happy to reach out and get another legal opinion for you.
Well, I'm kind of concerned, because the Michigan Township Association has a different perspective, and why they would say something different in their training sessions, and that's very concerning. I also think that when we collect fees, because water and sewer needs specific fund balances, and that money is moved out on the interest on the principal, that's not why we ask for those fees, or set those fees aside. And my concern is, it's inconsistent with the bold versus light decision.
Well, we use UHY as our auditors, as we discussed, so I'll reach out to UHY and get an opinion from UHY, from our auditors on that for you.
Well, it's the way, it's the way we've been doing it, I mean, since...
Right, because all the money's pooled, even though Jason breaks it down by department to show the general, show the fund balance, that just goes into the general fund, but we'll, I'll reach out to UHY and get you a legal opinion from them, or an opinion, and we'll compare notes. Okay? And we voted and approved six, so now...
We didn't do six. We didn't do six.
So make a motion.
Motion, support?
Support.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Okay, six to one, okay. Now we had taken out two items out of our...
Want me to address the other issues?
Yeah, sure.
Before we move on? Okay, so, Mark, I appreciate you sent an email to the administration this morning, and I apologize that I was in the meetings all day and didn't get a chance to respond to it till, I think it was about 5:30, so I guess you didn't see it, which is completely understandable, but I just want, I take issue with the assessment that we are not reporting according to the, both the state's accounting procedures manual and the Michigan Uniform Budget Manual for local units of government, that specifically state that you need a detailed showing of revenues by fund, and a detailed showing of expenditures with a budget to actual, and you need to display it quarterly, and that's all that's required. And so for the last 17 years that Jason's been here, I talked to him, and presumably long before he arrived, this is the format of the report that's been provided to the Board every quarter. It shows year-to-date actual revenues received by fund, it shows year-to-date actual expenditures received by fund, and for funds with more than one activity, it shows breakdown of activities, which is how we budget, we budget by activity. It also shows a budget-to-actual comparison, including how much of the budget remains for each item, and it also shows a comparison to the prior year at the same time. So the last column in the report shows year-to-date, prior year, where were we, right? So how much have we collected in tax revenue up until this point? This is the 1231 report that's in our packet. How much did we collect last year at 1231 versus how much we collected this year at 1231 versus what our budget is, and how much is left to collect based on our budget? So all of those things are provided quarterly by Jason into the packet, usually at the second meeting after the quarter end. In addition, I provide a report of cash balances and investment values, also typically at the second meeting after each quarter end. The reason I did not provide that report into this meeting's packet is because next week, on February 5, we have our annual study session, which is a combined meeting of the Board of Trustees and the Financial Sustainability Committee, where we will be going over that report in depth, and hear from our investment advisors, talk about not only our cash balances, but also all of our investments, how they've performed for the year, et cetera. And we do that every, well, typically January this year, we moved it into the first week of... of February, just by scheduling. So that takes place on February 5th. There will be a packet that will go out later this week, and the report that I described, the cash and investment report, will be in that packet, so everyone can review it before the next meeting. So between the cash balances report, as well as Jason's report that he puts in, all of the information is there that complies with the requirements. And as always, as a Board member, you are welcome to make additional requests for information. We'll be happy to provide it. Again, asking before the meeting allows us, excuse me, to have it for you at the meeting, or I can certainly email it to you as well. We talked about your question regarding the investment income. I understand you have some concerns. We can certainly discuss that, but the specific law is MCL 41.77, Subpart Two, that specifically states that the treasurer shall deposit the money in the financial institution that the Township Board may direct. Subject to this act, interest that accrues upon the deposit shall be paid into the General Fund of the Township. That's the letter of the law right there. So, and the last point that I wanted to make, that I also put in my email response, was that I appreciate the concern about us increasing our budgets and whether or not we have the funds to support that. I can tell you that we budgeted $1.75 million for investment earnings for fiscal year '25, and so far through 1231, we have earned $2.9 million. So we're already over budget by 1.2 million, and that's a good over budget because it's a revenue item, and I expect that the fourth quarter, the fourth fiscal quarter, meaning this quarter, the March quarter, will bring in another $1 million in interest because actually most of our bonds pay their interest in this quarter, so I expect another $1 million in interest that's going to come into our fund, our General Fund, this quarter. So we will double, actually, our investment earnings budget amount, so there is plenty of available funds to support these very modest budget amendments, so.
What was the MCL number again?
Sure, 41.77, Subsection Two.
And what year was that released?
The law?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I, I don't know what, I mean, we can look that up, I don't know.
And let's take a look.
It's not, it's not recent, but I don't know.
I, I haven't objected to the information as far as it, the balances and the budgets. I think that's fine, and I haven't objected to that. What I have objected to is the balance sheet items. Those are not included.
The balance sheet items, is that what you said?
Yes.
Sure, I mean, we can certainly get you a balance sheet. That's not a problem.
And I do believe that the Accounting Procedures Act, my concern is, that came out in '07, so if you're stating a statute that's before 2007, the 2007 document would take precedent.
Well, wait, let me, let me stop you right there. The document you're referring to that you sent me is a manual put out by the Department of Treasury, it is not state law, correct?
Right.
So they have authority under state law, and I don't know why I don't have the thing here, but I have it somewhere.
As I said, I can, I can read you 4177 just by the first numbers as part of the Michigan Township Acts, Chapter 41 of the statutes, and it's been in place for, probably since the state was formed. It is very old. I can look up specifically what date '77 was implemented and get you that information.
Correct. If there was any amendments to it?
Mike, yes. Well, the amendment, I mean, I pulled it directly from the legislature's website, and if there were any amendments, they would update that because the, the MCL would be compelled for that, so.
I have, I can access the history of it for all the amendments.
Sure, sure, but again, you know, Mark, you're referring to the Accounting Procedures Manual for Local Units of Government, which is put out by the Department of Treasury. It is not law.
So we don't have to follow it?
I'm not saying we don't have to follow it, I'm just saying it doesn't, it doesn't, well, no, it says required procedures, and I, I believe they cite a couple of laws that gives them the authority to put out this document, and they say required procedures, but what, all it says under required procedures are detailed revenue by fund, budget and actual, detailed expenditures by fund, budget and actual. That's it, that's all that's required. Then it's got some best practices that are recommendations, okay? And some of these are applicable for a township like ours, and keep in mind that there are over 1,000 townships in the state, some of whom have 300 residents, and so they've got a very different mechanism by which they keep their books, you know, they, than, than we do. And so, again, I mean, some of this is, you know, it even, this, this document says that it, it accounts for the fact that some people are accounting without computerized systems.
By hand.
By hand, because that's when this came out, '07, and that some of these smaller townships didn't have, which boggles my mind that they didn't have computerized systems, but it is, it's accounting for computerized systems, or for, or allowing for computerized systems, as if not everybody has one. So, again, if you want a balance sheet, if you want any other document, we're more than happy to provide it, you know, but, but, but we are in compliance with, with state law and with this accounting manual.
Then why would the Township Association tell me something different?
I can't answer that question. I wasn't there, I didn't hear what they said.
Interest should follow principle.
I, I will.
Interest follows principle.
Do they have, do they have a documentation of that presentation that you were at, you listened to, that you put forward to us?
They, they have packets that they presented. I provided you with the staff attorney.
Yeah, I know, I know who she is.
And.
Yeah, I, I call it.
They know who you are, they know who Martin is, and when I asked those questions, they were shocked. And that those reports aren't included, and they spoke.
That a balance sheet isn't included?
That a balance sheet is not included, so.
Okay.
And they spoke highly of, of Martin, and they spoke highly of you as well, so.
Okay.
So that's my concern. My other concern was the public safety.
Yes.
We have a $26 million deficit, we have $14 million fund balance at the beginning of the year, that's a $12 million deficit in the current report. We only approved 7 million, now an additional 2 million, but we're still short of where the money should be through the end of December, and that is a concern.
Well, yeah, I mean, the simple answer to that is that the General Fund provides enough liquidity to cover the Public Safety Fund and the Road Fund until the taxes are collected, and then, that, I mean, and that's how it works, because they're, ultimately, the General Fund supports the Public Safety Fund and the Road Fund anyway, so through, you know, through a transfer at the end of the year. So in terms of the cash flow, you know, the General Fund has $21 million in cash, so it, it covers.
You have $21 million in cash, you started with 16 million, and you have a $3 million deficit to date. Those numbers don't jive. What's on?
What's 16, I don't understand, what's 16 million?
The 16 million is the fund balance.
Of the, of the General Fund?
At the beginning of the year, and I'm looking at your, in, what's in the quarterly report.
Mm-hmm.
You have, you have cash coming in, you have cash going out, and that, and you have a $3 million deficit. So now you're telling us there's $21 million there?
Wouldn't this be a great thing for us to talk about at our February 5th meeting?
Yeah, it would be on February 5th, and I'm sorry, Jason left. We're all here to go over the budget stuff, and then you have some time to research some of these things, and then we'll have Jason here.
Really not the appropriate time.
Or be able to provide validity to it.
Mark, can you hold your comments and the questions till we get to the February 5th? And I'm sorry, Jason left, because he could help answer these.
Is it February, I thought it was February 10th?
Nope. 5th, 5th.
It's the morning, it's 8 o'clock.
The 5th is the special meeting with the joint meeting at 8 o'clock, Wednesday the 5th.
Yeah.
The following Monday, the first February meeting.
That's the budget, yeah.
Is the budget meeting, where we'll be going through the draft budget.
Sometimes that is a separate meeting, too.
And sometimes we have a separate meeting for that, but because of scheduling conflicts, we couldn't figure that out and get everybody there, which was the key thing. So we're all going to be there at the Board meeting, and that's, so that's what we'll do.
I think we have better detail for you. I'm sorry Jason left, because he could help in better detail to answer your questions. Can you hold them till the 5th for us, Mark?
That's fine.
Okay, thank you. All right, so let's move on to.
Can I say one more thing?
Yeah.
On a related item, I want to note, too, that, that we'll be starting a remodeling of this auditorium, upgrading electronic systems in mid-February, so the second February meeting, we will be proposing occur in the Cable Department. Just giving you a heads up that that's coming, and at our next, the first February meeting, our next meeting, we'll actually have more detailed discussion and opportunity to vote on that.
Yeah, we'll have one more meeting here, but we'll discuss it, and then we're going to move over to the Cable Studio, so for the remodel here.
And we'll be there till roughly the first week of April.
Okay. So we went back, and we had two items taken off our consent agenda, and the first item is approve the Transportation Alternative Program, TAP, grant application for northbound telegraph road safety path, and.
Is that valid?
The valid, want to take it off?
Yes.
Why? What's the question?
Just, you know, this is a new, a new structure, and I just think it's not a bad idea to have it covered as part of our meeting. Sorry, Cory.
Well, it's the second TAP grant that we've gotten. The first TAP grant was for across the street.
This is the continuation on the.
Routine item, we're getting, we're receiving money.
East side of telegraph, north.
That's, that's, all we're doing is receiving money, we're not authorizing the spending of money, we're not spending any money. If we get the grant, it'll come back to us, and we'll have an opportunity to vote on it and decide whether to accept the grant or spend the money.
And we're not going to discuss anything about the, the safety path that it pays for.
Part of the same project.
That's already, it's a safety path master plan, it's not different, it's, we've discussed it here at the Board many times, it's part of the safety path master plan that we've authorized, so.
Are there any other further questions on this? Cory, would you like to add anything?
No, I, I think it's, it's covered in the agenda packet, and all this is, all we're asking for is the approval from the Board as part of the grant application process. We need Board approval to apply for the grant.
Right.
We're not, we're not requesting any funds at this time, we'll only request funds if the township has awarded the grant and the township accepts the grant funds.
Why would we not ask you to apply for the grant? Great idea.
That's a question for the Board.
Sorry to keep you here, Cory.
It's okay.
Motion to approve.
Support.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, great, wonderful, and.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Cory.
And then item number D.
Thanks for meeting with the HOA.
And item number D, approval of payroll vouchers for January 27, 2025. Mark, you have some questions?
I, my same concern still stands, and we, we hashed part of it. I also don't think the SLC meter project, replacement project was approved properly, and I don't think the water and sewer rate approval should be, an approval of that large, of a scope of project.
Okay, any other comments on that?
Nope.
If not, I'll take a motion to approve.
So moved.
Support. Support, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Nope, six to one, okay, and I'll take a motion for adjourn. All in favor, say aye. I love this part. Yeah.